Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for May 4th, 2020. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mary Young.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Wilkinson to provide the invocation for tonight, please.
Please bow our head. Heavenly Father, when this is over, may we never again take for granted a handshake with a stranger, full shelves at the store, conversations with neighbors, a Friday night out, a taste of communion, a routine checkup, the school rush each morning, coffee with a friend, the stadium roaring, each deep breath, a boring Tuesday, life itself. When this ends, may we find that we have become more like the people we wanted to be, we were called to be, we hoped to be, and may we stay that way, better for each other because of the worst. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If y'all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first is the poppy proclamation. So whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower, which pays tribute to the war-dead and aids the living veterans and their families, and whereas the poppy as a memorial for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War, and whereas the contributions are used solely for children and youth and veterans affairs and rehabilitation in our local community, now therefore I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Poppy Month. And the City of El Dorado, Kansas has an expression of gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas to be affixed this fourth day of May 2020. This is also a Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, the unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths. Whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include local, state, and federal government employees, teachers, health professionals, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore I, the Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of El Dorado, Kansas to be affixed the fourth day of May 2020. So very much, we do want to, I want to take this opportunity to express the gratitude that I have for both of these proclamations, both in our veterans and the sacrifices that veterans and their families have made over the years to ensure the freedoms that we have, and then to our public service employees who have kind of kept the country going, especially through this time of COVID-19. Before we dive into the regular city commission agenda, I just wanted to kind of give a brief statement as to an update as to where we're at with the City of El Dorado and the COVID-19 response. The City of El Dorado developed a local plan to reopen municipal facilities after Governor Kelly released her plan to reopen the Kansas economy last week. As the nation begins to return to business as usual, it's important for citizens to continue to practice social distancing and good hygiene such as frequently washing hands with soap and water to prevent the spread of COVID-19. We must continue to be diligent in our actions to mitigate the risk of another outbreak. Everyone's cooperation will allow the economy to open according to Governor's plan so we can return to some resemblance of normalcy as quickly as possible. For its part, the city will take the following actions to do its part to prevent the spread of COVID-19. City Hall will reopen to the public beginning May 11th with protective screens and suggested queuing areas to encourage social distancing. City commission meetings will continue to be broadcast live on Channel 7, the city's YouTube channel, and the city's website. Public comment may be provided by letter or email. Citizens may also call City Hall to share comments verbally. The public will also have the ability to use Zoom to call into a regular meeting and make comments during the public comment section of the meeting. City commission meetings will hopefully be reopened for public attendance beginning May 18th. Utility service disconnections will remain suspended through July 1st. The city will reach out to utility customers with delinquent accounts to discuss payment options. Disconnect fees and penalties will not go into effect until July 1st. Penalties will not be assessed on outstanding balances incurred while disconnections are suspended. Municipal court will reopen on May 11th with court proceedings twice a week for at least two weeks to try to get up, to get caught up on hearings. Defendants should contact the municipal court at 316-321-9120 for more information on the court appearances and scheduling. The civic center will remain closed until June 15th due to the mass gathering limitations outlined in Governor Kelly's plan. The city will not open the facility for events until Phase 3 of the Governor's plan when 90 people may gather. The city will begin taking reservations for public facilities on June 1st for rental requests after June 15th based on the progression of the Governor's plan. Playground and splash pads will remain closed until at least June 1st in compliance with guidance from the CDC. The senior center will remain closed until June 1st, and the activity center will be closed for the summer season. Prairie Trail's golf course is open for play. Carts will be limited to one passenger to encourage social distancing. The city will encourage privately-owned cart owners to follow suit as well. Make no mistake, the past several weeks have been unprecedented and not without challenges. Many of our local businesses are struggling amid lower receipts. Some in our economy have been furloughed or even laid off. A few unfortunate residents have had to battle COVID-19 themselves or because a family member or friend became infected. It's important that we remember that we are stronger as a community and must be willing to assist family, friends, and neighbors who may feel the effects of the health or economic challenges. The city encourages citizens to consider ways of supporting local businesses or lend a hand to someone who may need help. So we're, as a city, moving forward with the plan and compliance with Governor's phased approach to get open back up, and I think that I really commend City Manager David Dolner and city staff for putting this together and getting us ready to go and hopefully get everything open back up in a timely manner, so. So, personal appearances, we don't have any personal, I'm sorry.
Splash pads closed until the 15th? Pool?
We're going to talk about the pool later.
Okay. And we're going to keep the activity center closed all summer?
Yeah, so we talked about that. The reason why we decided to do that is there's just not a lot of traffic. Generally speaking, we could maybe, I mean, Kevin, what do you think?
Two or three per day on a good day. On Wednesday night ends basketball, or Sunday afternoon ends basketball, part of the bigger draws. But the gathering requirements don't make basketball a very good thing to do at this point. I think we could consider opening it. We'd have to have a conversation with the school district because it is a shared facility. They provide custodial services. We'd have to have that conversation sometime in June, but our traffic count during the day really doesn't warrant a staff member historically.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering if we should not look at that just for the fact that everything else is closed, why it's closed and all of that, and if it's, I mean, it might be a point where we, you know, people want to use it. I would just, I would like to not take that off the table yet personally.
I think it's something, I think it's something to discuss moving forward as it, as we get to those points in the phased approach and have that conversation.
Trying to throw it out there so someone can make a mental note that we.
Mental note.
Thank you.
Mental note, maybe. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts before we move on? Do we have any personal appearances tonight, Tab?
No.
Okay, so agenda item number eight, public comments. In an effort to comply with Governor Kelly's executive order number 20-14, temporarily prohibiting mass gatherings, 10 or more people to limit the spread of COVID-19, the city has temporarily suspended the opportunity for public comments during city commission meetings. Citizens with information for the city commission are encouraged to contact City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 for instructions on alternative ways of communicating with the city commission. If you have any contact for public comment.
We do, we have.
Good.
So the first one is from Jackie Herbison from 1010 Southeast River Road in El Dorado. "I'm glad to see you have put in new playground equipment in all the parks plus the tennis courts. You, you kind of skipped over the Riverview Park except for inadequate parking lot. Must have been the same architect that designed the bridge over the dam. You can still see the crap from down, from down below the river. No one knew this would happen, just saying. Not decent area for fishing from bank. The south end is just weeds, is just weeds from parking lot to highway, holds water for miss, for, for most of the time. Never weeded, mowed, filled in, or usable. Where is the supervisor for these people? Pothole fillers come once a while, fill two holes, three at the most if two men on the truck. Is this the order for the day? Just saying. The park could use new playground equipment, more table, one more trash can. Something done about the miss, miss quote, mosquito, mosquito pit. If they look at the end of the slab of cement, they will see there is nothing under it, will eventually just crack, so money wasted. Now I see you have the fancy setup for the North Main playground equipment. When this mess is over, we would like to know when the next meeting is, where, and what time. Thanks." We also received this letter from Kevin and Mary Ellen Mulvaney of 1746 Southeast Coles Road, Cowls Road?
Cowls Road.
Cowls Road. Dear El Dorado City Commission, we are Kevin and Mary Mulvaney, Mary Ellen Mulvaney, and we own Four Leaf LLC. We own a home located in 207 North Washington, which we purchased in the fall of 2016. The structure directly to the north, located at 217 North Washington, has been an eyesore and is in terrible disrepair. It was a house at one time, but there hasn't been any utilities activated to it since we purchased 207 North Washington. The windows are missing, the roof is in really bad shape, and the foundation is crumbling. There are vermin living in and around the structure. Since we have owned 207 North Washington, there has been virtually no work done to 217 North Washington to improve its appearance or structural stability. It appears to be in a state of disrepair. In addition, the structure sits right on our property line. We would like the City of El Dorado to step in and do something about this situation. Ideally, the structure needs to be torn down for the safety and cleanliness of the neighborhood. We are including with this letter an informal petition of neighborhood citizens who feel the same as we do. Please look into this matter and let us know we can, what can be done to address this nuisance. We appreciate your time and help with this matter." And then on the back, it says, "We, the undersigned, respectfully submit a petition to the City of El Dorado, Kansas, for the demolition and removal of the vacant house located at 217 North Washington, El Dorado, Kansas. The house is in disrepair and is in danger and eyesore to the residents in vicinity of this structure." And 10 people have signed. Incidentally, I live in the proximity of this residence, and I was asked to sign this petition, but I did not do so. So that is there for your information. And then we received one from the municipal band. "My name is Barbara Templin, 515 Northwest Leon, Kansas, northwest, I'm sorry, 515 Northwest Street, Leon, Kansas, President of the El Dorado Municipal Band. I am representing the band for agreement with the City of El Dorado. This summer will be our 98th season. The officers are Barbara Templin, President, Keith West, Vice President, Kelly Davidson, Secretary, Marlene Avery, Treasury Treasurer, At-Large Members are Anita Sivelli and Charles Davis. The band directors this year will be John Templin, directing six concerts, Brett Martinez directing three concerts, and Carrie Kelly, excuse me, Middleton directing our last concert of the season. Our first concert, hopefully, will be June 1st, June 4th at 7:30 PM in Forest Park. We will perform nine more concerts during the months of June and July. Some special performances will be the Flag Day Concert on June 14th with the Elks, VFW, and the American Legion. They will have a flag display, speaker, and serve hot dogs. The Memorial Concert on June 25th honors members of the band that have passed on. There will also be an ice cream social that night with the proceeds going to an instrumental music scholarship at Butler Community College. On July 16th, along with our concert, we will host a bake sale with baked goods made by the band members. To be eligible to perform in the band, you must be a high school age, you must be high school age or older. In two years after this year will be the band's 100th consecutive year performing. This is a milestone for the City of El Dorado to be proud of. There are very few cities across the United States which, which can take claim to 100 consecutive years of municipal band performances. We are asking that you would consider contributing to the celebration. We have composed Ed Huckabee, we have commissioned Ed Huckabee, a well-known composer from Oklahoma, to write a musical composition for the El Dorado Municipal Band to be played throughout the Centennial Season of 2022. We really appreciate your support through the years and invite you to continue to come and enjoy a summer evening in the park with us. Thank you, Barbara Templin."
Do you guys, do y'all have any questions or comments about any of the stuff that was brought up in those?
Is someone going to look at 217? Is that on the radar now?
It has been for quite a while.
Okay. Does this initiate something for you now that you have a petition?
It'll, it could come potentially for you for condemnation like we did previously.
I mean, I'm assuming that's what, you need something like this to get it up the list, right?
You know, they've gone through municipal court. I don't have all my information or history on that home there, but there has been quite a significant history of issues.
Thank you. So what, I'm sorry.
Do the dates of the Governor's phase-in affect the band, municipal band?
So their first date was June 4th, and I believe if they do proper social distancing, then it wouldn't be a problem for that. I mean.
It'll be under 2,000 people legitimately, hopefully, right? Because by that point, it's 2,000 people plus, right?
No, that's the 90.
Yeah, that's middle of June.
June 15th.
That's the phase out. This is still in phase 3. Is that 90?
So, um.
Yes.
Yes. Phase 3 is 90 people, phase 4 is no people.
Have had.
No, yeah.
No people. We already did that.
I think Barbara understands that their schedule is going to depend on what happens with these phases. She's willing to work with us.
Well, as a mental note, I would like to get the conversation about some participation in their 100th anniversary before this commission, I think, to be able to really discuss that and see how we can participate and support that. You know, when we moved to town, when we moved to town when I was in high school, living in that neighborhood, I've always been super appreciative of the municipal band down there, and we try to make it down there as often as possible. I think that it is a big milestone to hit 100 consecutive years of municipal band performances. So I'm in favor of trying to find a way for the city to be supportive and participate in that celebration personally. So if you guys can put some stuff together at some point, we got a little talent.
Right.
Question I had was on, you know, the first letter you read about Riverside Park and some of the challenges they're having down at Riverside Park. Would it be possible, if, if the rest of the commission agrees, would it be possible for our Parks Department, for you and our Parks Department to kind of put together a rundown of the concerns and challenges there and what we may be able to do to address some of the concerns outlined in that public comment?
Sure.
Do you guys have any concerns about that?
I do not. I'd be in favor of that.
All right. Anything else?
I'd like to see a light on Nick Badway's dad. When he drives by there at night, it looks just strange. If you're driving by there, because the tennis court is all lit up, and then there's this man standing in the bush.
Right.
Yeah. Is there any way to put a solar light on that?
Well, there's, there's electricity in the park, so I'm sure that it can be.
Yeah, just, I mean, it's just kind of, it's kind of strange.
Cecil Riverview, he'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, next on the, our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, 5 a.m. I don't see that we have any old business. We'll move on to new business. Agenda item number 12, the I-35 K-254 Boyer Road Conceptual Study Agreement.
Mayor, Commissioner, we're asking you tonight to consider allowing the city manager to enter into agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation and the Kansas Turnpike Authority. And really, the culmination of this work has been over the last number of few years in, in talking to the Kansas Turnpike about El Dorado and our potential, and some of the struggles we deal with today with the intersection of Boyer Road and 254 and the KTA. Now it's kind of an awkward five-legged intersection. It's hard to navigate. And so as they have been along in this process with us, as we've, as we've talked to potential prospects about El Dorado, as we worked through the West Industrial Park Master Plan, and really kind of bought into this concept of El Dorado really being proactive and kind of getting answer-ready on, on what we have to offer. So the Director of Engineering for the Kansas Turnpike had a meeting with the Secretary of the Department of Transportation and discussed the idea of partnering on a study of what 254, I-135, and the west side of El Dorado look like in the future. We came to terms, we kind of agreed in concept of what that may look like. And in December, we began sending out solicitations to pre-qualified engineers to do freeway work in the state of Kansas. We had eight respondents. Of that, it was narrowed down to a list of four. Interviews were held, and a selection was made to move forward with scoping with trans systems. And what, what this study will do, will look at a very phased approach to maybe some immediate needs, improvements, to accelerated design, to if, if there is development, I curse in the West Industrial Park or the Grizzly Development Area. And then also looking at how we could phase these. So part of this study will look at different type of industries and the traffic generation that may cause, and when that would trigger improvements. Because right now today, if you look at the raw numbers, that intersection has capacity in it. But we have the difficulties of how do we access properties west of the turnpike. There's no clear-cut avenue other than 254. There's no local road. How does 196 play into this as already a design-constructed interchange? So lots of, lots of worthwhile work to go through and things to look at so that we can be prepared, along with Kansas Turnpike and Kansas Department of Transportation, to react to prospects that may approach us. We've had a number of them over the last five years that we've worked with, and they'll tell us, hey, we're going to generate so many trips per day, we're going to have this many trucks. And then it's a scramble on the phone. Hey, where can the new interchange be built? Can it handle this capacity? So they understand that. And very appreciative of both of those entities hearing our concerns and listening to us and agreeing to partner with us in this. And it's unique. I can tell you today, KTA already has a study. It already has what, in their world, meets the definition of an approved interchange. That has, that has already happened. However, they, they took a step back and said, you know what, we need to understand the community more. We need to understand all this work they're doing and, and understand 254 as a corridor and meet with those associations. Part of this study will bring stakeholders in, and we'll have meetings with stakeholders. There will be presentation to you all, along with the Secretary of Transportation and KDOT's Board of Trustees, or the Turnpike's Board of Trustees. The, the scope of the study grew through the interviews, just because we want to make sure, get all this stuff in. And really, a lot of it was advocating for the City of El Dorado, we need to think about this or think about that, and not just a aerial view and build a freeway that anyone can do. So it grew, and, and the estimated cost of the study is $366,601. Of that, the KTA and KDOT are asking the City of El Dorado to contribute $50,000 towards. That cost would be billed at the completion of the study. They anticipate bringing a final document study to you all sometime in the beginning of January, or beginning of 2021. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Again, we're asking you to authorize David to enter into an agreement with KTA and KDOT.
So our commitment is $50,000. The estimate you said was 360?
Six.
366. So KT and KDOT are picking up the remainder now?
Yeah. In, in, in your packet tonight, you have the scope of services. You also have what was their summary approach to the project. So of the four that firms that were narrowed down, do, do, conduct interviews, they were all asked to submit an approach to their design and theory. And as we talk through this, and we have these meetings, and we do these interviews and see these summaries, a lot of it has to do with local roads too. Is there a, is there a local road that better serves the business office part? How does Boyer Road play into it? So a lot of it has to do with our local roads as well.
With, with this money, does that buy us a say? Does that buy, I mean, is this, we're going to put money into it, and they're just going to do whatever they want?
No, so there'll be 10 meetings that will be held with the representative of the City of El Dorado, KTA, and, and KDOT. And they were very open through this, letting me have a voice and a say, and being heavily involved in interviews and the questions to ask, adding things to the scope that quite frankly, you know, increased that original concept. You know, originally, they were thinking this may be a hundred to $150,000 study. So a lot of that driven increase in scope was kind of me saying, we need to look at this, we need to understand that.
And what I don't see is Grizzly Development really in these plans. Is that if, if anything happens up there, is I going to change this? Like, are we going to move it north?
Potentially. And, and, and part of the study is going to be. Potentially, and, and, and part of the study is going to be looking at adjacent land, the property that's available, its current land use, what its future may hold. So what you saw in that summary of that approach, that was, that engineer, just with a very little bit of knowledge in what we were trying to accomplish, pitched an idea to say, this is how we approach.
But with that said, there's probably only going to be one interchange, more than one.
Right.
So we want to make sure that it's placed in, in, in the best location sufficiently allows transportation movement for not only the West Industrial Park, but also the Grizzly Development Side, the north end of town, various other elements. So it's not just, how do we serve this particular intersection, but it's really, what do we need to do to serve this entire area effectively and efficiently?
Turnpike's got a lot of history in El Dorado. It, Turnpike was, the idea of the Turnpike was from El Dorado. A gentleman named LW Newcomer, he came up with the idea, and.
He was head of, head of.
Yeah, he was, a gentleman named Rod Fogo was the chief engineer and later general manager. My father was the chairman of the Turnpike Authority for fifteen years. Frank Becker was on the Turnpike Authority from El Dorado, so there's a boatload of history with the Turnpike in El Dorado. And I think it's, I think it'd be cool as hell. They, they're, you know, they're, they're a quasi-state agency, so they don't, they're independent, and they have their own, they don't get a nickel of tax money. And they, they do the right thing, and they do it right. And so I'm all for this. I think this is a great thing. And anything I can do to help, I absolutely will. As a, as a commissioner and personally.
Well, I'm glad they're letting us be a part of this, because the goal of this whole thing is to move traffic west. And I'm glad they're including El Dorado into it, because it's all going to interlink in the US fifty-four bypass of Wichita. So we need to be included in it, we need to have a voice in it, so the traffic flows east. So I'm all, I'm all for this. I've known this was coming down the Pike for quite a while.
No pun intended, right? No pun intended.
No pun intended.
So the project would be funded as a city's contribution out of that economic development fund, the sales tax?
Out of that new economic development?
Well, out of that fund, yeah.
Yeah, out of that, out of the, okay, excess sales tax.
Or, no, the, the economic development, sales tax that goes to economic development.
But that's part of the sales tax, it's, it's in the.
It's not excess sales tax.
Yes.
It, it's in that lump of money.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Do you need a motion, or just a consensus?
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
How about I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation, the Kansas Turnpike Association for studying the I thirty-five, K two fifty-four, and K one ninety-six interchange. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five out. Thank you. Gen item number thirteen, professional services agreement with Bajillion Agency for Community Branding Services.
Mr. Mayor Commission, the city commission requested that staff do an RFQ to reach out for rebranding services for the city of El Dorado in two thousand and nineteen. We sent that proposal out and received four responses. The CTC board interviewed three of the four companies and reached a consensus to recommend the Bajillion Agency to the city commission. Their proposal will offer an approach that provides research, branding, message development, a marketing plan and marketing elements for the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, and then provide future phases should we wish to pursue those. Those would include things like signage for around the city, and where those things could be purchased, and other items such as that. The city commission had requested that this project be completed by September of this year to begin the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration, and to help with some of the lake promotion. However, with the current pandemic, they are unable to do focus groups as they normally would, and, and do those in a timely manner. And so they have requested that we extend the deadline, and staff are recommending that the deadline be extended to the end of the year, and then we would start fresh January first with whatever logo and things. So they would likely provide us something for you guys to consider late this year that we could start off the new year with. The cost of the proposal is twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. We can originally budgeted a hundred thousand for the project. The fund, the tourism fund is not raking in the revenue right now, as people are not staying in the hotels. And so we have decided not to fill the position that Molly vacated when she moved. And so we will just kind of see what revenues come in like this year, and if we're able to do something differently, we will. But for now, that position will remain unbilled until twenty twenty-one. That and some other cuts to that budget have allowed us to make sure that we can continue with this project. Questions?
Any questions up here?
I want to say that I was part of this process with this group, and they really, really kicked, looked under every stone, asked questions, really thought, processed everything, and it was almost unanimous. We had one lady that had a preference of another, but this was her second choice, so it was almost, let's call it ninety-five, ninety-five percent behind. I, after looking at all the material and listening to everything, I, I feel like we've, we've chosen a, a good company to move us forward, you know, for the next twenty-five years, because what we have now, we've had for about twenty-five years. And that's kind of the, this, whatever these people will do is going to, we're going to be using for at least twenty years, as far as, as the past shows. So I feel pretty comfortable.
They certainly look like a young, energetic group.
And they, they were, and they are, and I, I feel like we're, we're going to get a fresh set of eyes on who we are and how we present ourselves.
Where are they at? I'm just curious.
Up north to Pika?
Pika, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, their, their information they provided, their information packet was their answer for the RFQ, and their information packet was great, so.
And, and Molly had it, Molly had real good experience before she left, dealing with them, getting, you know, as soon as she needed more information, they had it right to her. That was who she came down on before she, she had left us, so.
Let me play devil's advocate for a minute. This twenty-seven thousand will come from where?
The tourism fund?
Bed tax.
Bed tax.
And we have that money?
There's a significant, there's a good-sized fund balance in the tourism fund. And even with the cuts, even with the depleted revenue we are expecting this year, we will still meet the minimum. David and I looked at that today, so we'll still meet the minimum requirements of the city.
Is that what this money is earmarked for?
The CTC fund, or tourism fund, is for things like marketing the city, for bringing visitors to town. And it's our hope that by redoing this rebrand and kind of getting a unified message, that we can use it to help bring more people to town.
Okay, let me, again, to me, a school budget and a city budget are different. Can this money be used for anything else besides tourism?
I don't know the answer to that, I would have to read the statute closer.
It would also be defined by our charter ordinance for bed tax.
So basically, this money has to be used for?
I'm almost positive it is. I'm almost, I, I, I don't hit me if I'm wrong, but I want to say that I, I do believe that it's for that.
Okay, okay, because I, I have had some people question me, couldn't we spend that money somewhere else? And that's basically what I want to know, is that this money is coming from a fund that is designated only for tourism?
I think.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I want to know. Now.
She's going to look it up, but in, in reviewing the transit guest tax charter ordinance since I've been here, my recollection was that it did not have anything else besides community marketing, tourism, promoting the community, so on and so forth. So some communities have charted out of the statute, may, they will allow you to do, use part of it for, you know, economic development, or they'll carve out different elements of that. In El Dorado's case, that was not the case, and it's just strictly for community branding and community marketing, promotion, promoting the community. So I think sometimes communities will say, well, it's, it's for heads and beds. The difficulty is, how do you, how do you know? So I think if we look at it in terms of, this is our marketing budget, we're going to market the community. Ideally, some folks will stay overnight in hotels and will get more bed tax, but in some cases, they may not, but they, they still will be coming to town. They might be spending some money on stuff that has sales tax applicable or other things. But the whole idea is marketing the community and promoting the community for visitors to come and visit your community.
Okay, so this is the only phase that we're paying for?
Right now.
Right now, this is all you're approving, is this first phase that will give us the, a brand that they, that they develop. It will give us some, some marketing materials, and it will give us a hundred and, or, they switched out one of the items when the pandemic hit, and it kind of shortened the timeline a little, and have switched it to a piece for advertising our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary that will be only used for the whole year.
And then if we want a phase two?
They will.
If and when we do, then we ask.
It'll come back again to us.
If we need something else from them.
Okay, I just, I just have to admit, I have a little bit of trouble spending money in the conditions that the economy is right now, but I see I'm on the fence. It's an awesome idea. I think we need it badly. But it helps me to know that the money is being spent from where it's supposed to be and can't be used for anything else. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think the other thing that may or may not help with your fence situation there, COVID nineteen will end.
Oh, I know, I know.
And so what, what I think this is, is really, I mean, irregardless of COVID nineteen or not, I think we need to do things now to get us in a position where we can, we can respond to, you know, people are going to be bored, there are no things to do. And if we can use this as a jumping off, we need a brand, we get that taken care of, and then we start pushing it, we'll be able to attract people that are just looking for something to do. But then, to Commissioner Guthrie's point, this will, this will live with the city for quite a while. So this will be a, a new brand and a new way of promoting the community for a while. But I think to say, well, because of the, the current economic conditions, we should probably hold off on that. Well, if we, if we don't, then that could actually help our businesses by, by drawing in business and activity. It won't be for a while, but I think to use that money and to allocate those monies to that type of use could eventually bring folks into the community, whether we eat in our restaurants, hanging out in our hotels, doing fun things in our community. That's, I think, the whole idea behind it. So you can say the timing might not be right, but the timing might be ideal.
I think the timing is as good now as it's going to be for, for that reason alone, right? So I think there's an opportunity to be very diligent in how we spend our money at, at city level. We, we should always be thoughtful in how we're spending taxpayer money. And today, with, with the knowledge that receipts are likely going to be down, and we know that we're going to run into some, some other budgeting challenges, really, I think, being purposeful in allocating this money specifically to something that, that by its design is, is meant to draw more people, not just to El Dorado, to the businesses, to the, to the community, I think, helps offset, with time, helps offset the lower receipts that we have today.
The, the state statute is pretty vague and just says promote tourism.
Surprise, surprise. Thank you.
As, as far as I could read very fast, it talked a lot about how you can collect the tax, but not a lot about what it's going to be.
Okay.
I'm good.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
I was going to say, Mr. Guthrie.
Yeah, I'll take it. I lost that.
It's on the second.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
I'm in the middle of bajillion stuff here, here we go. I move to approve the proposal from Bajillion and direct the city manager to complete the contract.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five out.
I have one suggestion. That when they create all this, just a suggestion, mind you, that they utilize the colors of the city flag.
That was, that was in the conversation.
Okay.
That not, none of them really.
They don't commit to it.
They knew, they knew, they know we have a flag, they know we're proud of the flag. They just don't know how they're going to figure that all out, but they've all, they all admitted, that they all, you know, acknowledged, we have this flag, we're proud of it, they're going to have to use it.
Well, I was just looking at some of the things that they'd already developed, and thinking, why do we need a new color scheme when we already have one?
They said that they don't usually provide a color scheme until late in the development process, because they don't want people to get stuck on colors and shades and things like that.
And most of them.
They want you to see the logo first.
Get the shit down, and then start worrying about colors.
Okay, that's all.
Gen item number fourteen, Prairie Trails Golf Course Rates.
Um, yeah, it was, uh.
He was dreadful.
The charter rates is also here. Um, so yes, rates for Prairie Trails Golf Course, so in your packet will be attached, included a, an exhibit that has the pass order rates and benefits. So we have a, we are offering, we will offer a seven-day unlimited access pass to the golf course, which includes a cart and range balls for eighty-six dollars a month for an individual. The family rate would be a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per month, and family would be defined as a spouse or significant other living in the same residence, and children under the age of twenty-four living in the same residence as the primary pass order. All plans are a twelve-month obligation, and will be billed each month and paid by bank draft. Rates are guaranteed until December thirty-first, twenty twenty, reduced entry to themed tournaments as well. In addition, the daily rate, Sunday through Saturday, so the weekend rate for eighteen holes with a cart is thirty-five dollars, these are the lockup rates. And then Sunday through Saturday, the nine-hole with cart is twenty-five dollars. Sunday through Saturday, eighteen-hole walking is twenty-five dollars, and then the nine-hole walking on the weekend is fifteen dollars. And then on Monday through Friday, youth rate, walking is ten dollars, and that's for sixteen and younger. Incidentally, it does not have the weekday rate. Kevin, do you remember what the weekday rate is?
These are all, these are seven-day rates.
Oh, Sunday through Saturday, so my apologies. I misread that. So eighteen-hole with cart is thirty-five dollars, nine-hole with cart is twenty-five, eighteen-hole with, that is walking only, is twenty-five dollars, nine-hole walking without cart is fifteen, and then our youth rate for sixteen years and under is ten dollars, Monday through Friday.
So we are leaving it as an eighteen-hole?
Yes, but you can, you can pay for nine or, pay on any one way. So the question that we often get is, how does this compare to what Great Life currently, what their rates are or were? The monthly pass order rates are, are the same, so the one hundred and twenty-nine dollars per month and the eighty-six dollars a month for the individual is the same as what Great Life was charging. So if you buy the month-to-month pass, then that, then you're basically even with what you would be paying with Great Life. The daily rates, the lockup rates, are actually cheaper than what Great Life was charging, because they were trying to incentivize folks to be members and not just walk up and pay. So all in all, it's probably a pretty good deal.
The daily rate was more with Great Life. What was great, because I know Great Life was promising, they promised us the world, and I'm sure they were promising their customers the world also. I think, was this price, like, if we're matching them, was it including with, you know, all the fancy stuff they were expecting to do out there, do you think? Or were they telling people it was going to get more expensive?
I don't actually know what they were telling people.
Okay. Well, I mean, we hired some of their people, I'm assuming that we could have got that information. I'm just, I'm curious to, you know, because with their packages, they were getting other golf courses also.
That's correct.
And they were getting, you know, they were getting more benefits than just playing out there on the golf course. And so that's, I've got more questions on this than the last three weeks than I have anything else.
Sure.
And that, and that's, that was one of the questions to us, is that, you know, if we're doing Great Life's rates, Great Life was playing, promising the world, you know, gold-plated golf carts and stuff like that in the end. So if we're, I, we're kind of set now, which I'm okay with, I guess, at this point, as long as we don't lose our, the people that we had before, that they had before. But I just want to make sure that we're looking at it the right way and not some grandiose fashion.
Well, as David said, I can't attest to what the Great Life management team was telling members about, what they were promising. Those that are members now are paying this rate to play golf in El Dorado and the other Great Life courses in the area, so you're correct about that. I don't know if they were promising the fitness upgrades and staff that we hired doesn't have that information.
Okay.
So these rates, these monthly rates are substantially less than when we operated the golf course previously. So that, that's a plus. And as David said, we're lower on the walk-up rate for someone who doesn't want to pay monthly. So, so the walk-up rates are pretty consistent with courses in our area.
And the membership rate for a single is, for an individual is two and a half times, you know, two and a half times the walk-up rate, so, per month.
Are we going to honor passes that were purchased through Great Life?
So the arrangement that we've currently worked out with Great Life, there are about 10 or 12 people that purchased annual passes, or annual passes, if you will, that prepaid. So the arrangement we have with Great Life right now is that Great Life is going to remit that payment to us, and then those patrons will be, they'll be in the system. We have yet to receive that payment, so we will continue to wait for it, and when we get it, we'll have that.
Don't hold your breath.
In the meantime, if we don't get it, we'll have to have a list of the patrons, and they'll have to either, don't have to take that issue with Great Life themselves, but then they'll have to probably pay us for rights to play on the golf course. Because they don't, they presently don't have rights because they're not paid. So we have had a couple of people ask about that. The way we look at it, and we can make contact with Great Life, we've already done that, and given away them a check, but we've got a couple of other things we're trying to work through with them as well. And so if they hold that check up, then we may not be receiving for a while. As far as the monthly patrons go, they will have to come in and they will have to complete paperwork because we are going to do this by bank draft, so we have to have bank information and those kind of things. So right now, from last Friday through.
Basically Thursday.
Through Thursday, you'll be able to come down, play for free. And when you're down, you might as well bring your information, we'll get you put in the system so we can get you, get paperwork filled out, get you set up for bank draft so we can get you set up on the monthly. If you don't want to do that, at that point in time, that's fine. We'll charge the daily rate, and then you can come in whenever you want and get your monthly rate set up and we'll get you built for that. So it's kind of flexible in that regard. The folks, and it's kind of nice that we're taking it over on the first because, in essence, all of those monthly rate holders are now fresh. They're all new, they don't, we're not in between where we're like, you paid Great Life, and now we're kind of this little thing with Great Life about money. It's clear, and so now they've got to come here and get their paperwork filled out so we can build their bank account.
As you mentioned, Great Life increased their walk-up, their walk-on rates to $45, I think, and they did that to drive people to buy memberships. Have you guys considered that if we reduce those walk-on rates down to 35, do we think that that might have a reverse effect? We might lose monthly or annual pass holders if we lower the walk-on rates too much. And so how does that impact our cash, monthly cash flow and revenue?
Well, nothing in this business apparently can be guaranteed. As you pointed out a minute ago, it's two and a quarter times of playing for a monthly fee. Most of the people that are paying a monthly fee are paying, are playing four, five, six, seven, eight times a month during golf season. So I don't know that we will see a significant drop-off based on rates. If we're going to lose member or pass holders, it's going to be because they either want the opportunity to play more courses than we can provide since we're a single course and a single community that Great Life offer. Or frankly, they don't want to pay a membership fee to the city of El Dorado. But that's a possibility and something that we can't forecast.
So do we have a membership list or a member list from Great Life? Have they provided that to us?
Yes, we do.
How many, how many annual or monthly members do we have now?
They have approximately 180 members. As David said, it's 10 to 15 that have paid the annual fee, so the balance are monthly.
180 total?
180 total, yes. Which is about twice what it was when the city operated it in the past, so.
You know, Great Life took it, we were transferred about, or they took about 70 members.
Right.
So they increased it from 70 to.
And again, is it price-driven? Was it driven by, we can pay to play in El Dorado and four or five other courses in the area? I don't know the answer to that question. The, as soon as rates are set, we'll have staff start contacting these members from Great Life to see what their intention is and hopefully convince them to stay with us.
I just would like, I think, from my perspective, I'd like to really keep an eye on those membership numbers and try to figure out some sort of exit survey if we do have members drop. You know, that increase, while it's only $10, right, per round. You know, we saw, when Great Life took it over, we saw those membership numbers really increase. And so my curiosity is, is it because of how they set their daily rate? Or is it because of the other things that Great Life offered? Or, and the fact that they were the, you know, new shiny object at the time? So those are all, those are all drivers for, potential drivers for increased membership. But I'd just be curious, if we lower that daily rate, what kind of impact that ultimately has on our membership rate? If we could figure out how to do our best to try and capture some of that information, that'd be great, in the long run. I don't have any problem with rates, I'm just curious what that impact is.
And we can actually do that, do our best to gather that information. The hope is lowering that daily rate is going to drive some walkout traffic for people that don't want to be members here, that are wanting to play a different course from Arc City or Newton or Wichita, wherever they're coming from. And that's what Great Life staff was seeing over the past month during the stay-at-home orders. A lot of people from Wichita coming to pay the daily rate, so.
So another thing that I mentioned to Dave, and I just want to let the commission know this. I, you know, Great Life did, what they offered in their kind of reciprocal rates or their reciprocal opportunities at other golf courses, at other Great Life golf courses, is kind of a draw, right? If you're a member of that organization, then you theoretically can play at some of these other courses. I'd be curious if we could do some research with other municipal courses and see if there's a way to create some sort of reciprocal agreement with them to be able to maybe give some of those types of advantages to our members or our pass holders, golf pass holders in the region. So it'd be something I'd be interested for you guys to look into and just let us know how the conversation goes or what the, kind of what the temperature is when you engage with more municipal courses in the region.
Try to make like a golf concern, if you will.
Sure. A little consortium of municipal golf courses that have some sort of reciprocity between the two, between them.
I have some questions that aren't rate-related. Shall I wait till afterwards?
Well, let's do the rates first, then we'll.
Any other questions before we, about the rates? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the pass holder rates as provided.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five out.
Questions?
Too late, where, no, I'm just. Go ahead, what do you got?
I want.
I've got some questions as well.
I want a sign made to cover up Prairie Trails that says El Dorado Municipal Golf Course with the city flag on it. And I don't care if it's done on plastic and tied on to the one there at the corner of, what is it, 12th and Country Club? We need to distinguish ourselves away from Prairie Trails.
You want to change the name?
Yes.
It's like El Dorado Municipal Golf Course?
Municipal Golf Course. We've talked about it before.
And what does that do to us, though?
We didn't, I mean, we didn't do anything with it then because of Great Life. But Prairie Trails has a connotation in this town that it's the country club. And it's not a country club anymore, it's the city municipal golf course.
Just plain depthless advocate on this side, no? Do you think they will ever change that? Like, ever change it, I mean, do you ever change anybody's opinion?
I think that at least, I think that at least as a city commission, we can say the city has taken it over, it now belongs to all of us, not just a select group. And will it change anybody's mind? I don't know. Maybe, maybe it won't. But it's ours now, we should take ownership of it.
So, so a couple of things, I don't, I don't disagree at all, Kendra, that I want to make sure that we don't have a connotation that it's a private country club. I don't disagree with that at all. I think if, and in the long run, I'm not opposed to having, talking about a name change. We've kind of talked about, kicked that around before. I think that, I think if we do discuss a name change, I think it's an opportunity to involve the community, to let the community know that it is a municipal course. It's been a municipal course for a long time, but to let the community really involve them in that process if we choose to do that. I think the challenge is that, you know, as we look at these numbers that we got from Great Life during this, you know, it's been Prairie Trails when it was a country club, it was Prairie Trails when the city owned it, Prairie Trails when Great Life owned it, today, at this point, it's Prairie Trails. They've built, in all of the challenges that we had with the Prairie Trails, with the sales Prairie Trails, they have built something out there over the last two years because they've increased membership from, pass holder membership from 70 to nearly 200. So I don't know, I mean, I don't, obviously I don't think Great Life's listed on anything. I think right now it's called Prairie Trails. I'm not opposed to, to figure a discussion about changing the name, but I think it's an opportunity to involve the community if we wanted to change the name. I mean, rather than throwing up a sign that says El Dorado Municipal and then thinking about something else, maybe we involve the community, not just the golfing community, but the citizens of El Dorado in a, kind of in a naming conversation for the municipal golf course. I think we do need to make it clear, which we can do, to your point, Matt, I think what you were saying is, will it make a difference, right, if we name it? Whatever we name it, is it going to make a difference to people that still think it's a country club? I don't, I don't know that it will, and maybe, maybe it will, maybe it won't. I think that we need to do a better job at the city level, not just on, not just staff, but even the commissioners, we get out and communicate with people. We need to do a better job of communicating what we have out there as a municipal course. Not just to the golfers, but to the people around the community as well. So I don't disagree with the thought, I mean, that there's still a connotation that it's a, that it's a private country club. And I think that, I don't want to, my thing is, Kendra, I don't want to rush into a name change and then decide later we want to name it something else, whatever, whatever that is, right? I mean, maybe we, maybe we get thoughtful about it and see if we can involve the community in some sort of naming conversation. It'd be my thought, but I don't disagree that there is still a, I still get that all the time. People still refer to it as the country club. So.
Well, I've been caught saying that also, so.
Right.
Bottom line, it's owned by the people of El Dorado, so it's El Dorado Municipal Golf Course. It's what it should be. It's not a private club.
Well, I mean, but with that being said, McDonald Stadium's owned by the people of El Dorado, but it's not El Dorado Municipal Stadium. I'm saying we can talk about a name change if that's a conversation we want to have. I don't want to just dive into something just because we, you know, our impression is that that's the only way to get away from the country club connotation, if that's a concern. And we've got lots of things in El Dorado that are owned by the city of El Dorado that have, that have gone through a naming conversation about how we should name it. That we've involved the community, but it's my only point. Did they, did Great Life put up a sign? Is it Great Life, okay, so there's not?
I think the only, as far as I can tell, the only brand that they put up was on their flags, they had Great Life flags.
That was it, that was it.
I think that was it.
They've planned on staying a long time, weren't they? Didn't do anything in two years.
Well, if you think about it, though, I mean, they're, 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 they're not, they're buying a golf course that's already existing. So if we bought Augusta National today, we wouldn't change the name to whatever. We're buying Augusta National Golf Club, and that comes with everything that everyone knows that golf course. So, I mean, Prairie Trails, like it or not, that's the name that everyone in this region knows our golf course by. Same thing with Sand Creek Station, which is, that's Newton Municipal Golf Course. They don't call it Newton Municipal, they call it Sand Creek Station. That's the brand, so if you're like, hey, I want to go play golf in Newton, oh, what's that called? It's called Sand Creek Station. That's just the name. So they didn't have to, they didn't have to put up a bunch of Great Life stuff because they weren't selling Great Life. Their members were already members. People, most people didn't drive up and say, I want to be a member. The way they did it was they went to organizations and they sold memberships to the corporations. And then you just, they just went around to your place and said, you want a membership, you want a membership? And they did it, they did it that way. So they didn't need a brand because the people who are members already, hey, if we can go play in El Dorado, let's go, let's go to Prairie Trails. So I think that that's kind of the big thing in my mind is, that's the brand, that's the name of the golf course, that's what people know. So they didn't have to do all the other stuff.
Well, I see what you're talking about at least, Kendra. Okay? I would like to, while we're on the golf course topic, I mentioned to David at lunch today that I, you know, I wanted him to put together, you guys, the staff to put together just kind of a one cheater, you know, where we're at with rates, kind of process moving forward, what things look like at the golf course moving forward. And I know I'm going to spend some time trying, you know, later in the afternoon, just getting out to the golf course and walking around and talking to people that are out there, because there's a lot of questions, I mean, to your point, Matt, I mean, we're getting a lot of questions about this. I want to reassure people that we still have an 18-hole course. We're going to continue with an 18-hole golf course in El Dorado. We've set the rates now tonight. And that this, that this, that golf is going to be available to the citizens, not just at El Dorado, but I mean, as a municipal course. And so I've asked David to put together, like I said, just a handout that we can take with us as we're talking to people, and I'm going to spend some time out on the golf course, driving around, visiting with golfers and seeing what their thoughts are as well. So I'll be bringing some of that back to the commission, I think, over time as well.
Is it staffed?
Ian Hart. So that has been one of the challenges that we have run into. So before we. So before we, before Great Life was operating it, we had our staff out there main, operating it and managing it, and then they, all of those folks went to Great Life. Not all of those folks came back to the city. And I think part of the, the challenge with that is, they just got tired of getting ping ponged. So the city has it, Great Life has it, the city's going to have it, and oh, the city also wants to continue to decide to sell it. We don't like this uncertainty, we're just going to lose our jobs. So I think that was a leading, leading reason why we didn't, we didn't, we weren't able to secure a lot of those guys. We have a temporary full-time pro shop manager. Steve is also the pool manager, so we just moved him over because right now the pool's not open. In the hopes that maybe in the next couple of weeks, we can find a, a full-time pro shop manager. We have a full-time greenskeeper that came from Great, that came from Great Life that worked there when the city owned it as well. So Stacy's continuing to do that work of the golf course. But we are looking for an assistant greenskeeper, because it's very difficult for one person to maintain eighteen holes With or without part-time folks. So we're still looking for one full-time assistant greenskeeper. And we're looking for a number of part-time positions now.
Offers have been extended to part-time folks. We're pretty close to where we need to be on part-time staff.
Wasn't there trouble with the pool last year, or when we still had it?
There was at some point, but then we decided
We filled it in.
Yeah, the pool's no more. At Prairie Trails.
So you're, when you say pool, you're talking city pool?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Steve was, Steve is actually the pool, municipal pool life manager.
The city pool. The Eldorado city pool.
The only pool we own.
I'm sorry. That was, that was me. Okay. Pardon? Okay. So when is the city pool? Is that one that phases in with?
We will be talking about that here.
Okay. I'll be quiet.
Anything else on Prairie Trails? Good.
Yes, we do have something else. This is, this is the last name, I promise. So when we Owned the golf, or when we ran the golf course, and then as we transitioned to Great Life, we had fifty-five golf carts out there, and at that point in time, They would pretty much need to be replaced anyway. So we were kind of budgeting and planning on replacing golf carts. The last time the city had replaced golf carts, we just bought them. So we owned fifty-five golf carts. So as we were thinking about options, we were looking at, you know, buying versus leasing, and then Great Life came in, and then we didn't, we didn't worry about it. So now we fast forward a year later, we still have fleet of golf carts. And they, they're actually needing to be replaced more so than they were when we had it because they're a year older and that sort of stuff. So I asked Kevin to get some quotes for leases, and I apologize if this was not in your packet, because we Actually just got these numbers finalized today. So we weren't able to get those out to you with the packet. But We tried to move as fast as we could in light of the transition and everything. We weren't expecting to have it made first, and we did, and so then here we are. But he, his staff has collected some lease rates For thirty-six golf carts. So mind you, we have fifty-five out there now. We would, under this proposal, we would lease thirty-six, which means we would have twenty-some. That would, would be there, but they, they wouldn't be functioning. Is that correct?
Right. If, depending on if you approve the lease agreements, we trade thirty-six of our existing fleet of fifty-five To replace for thirty-six leased carts. That leaves us nineteen. Of those nineteen, They are not in great running order. I would say maybe three or four of them are in running order. The others have various issues. So we would have nineteen carts that we could make a decision to trade. Sell as is, spend some money to make usable. So there are options, and each cart would cost a little bit different depending on what its problem is.
Can you take nineteen carts and maybe get ten out of them with a little bit of money?
Of the nineteen, We don't really know the big picture yet. I would say from the nineteen, we could probably, I could safely commit to getting five or six of them.
So, so why, so why are we only looking to lease thirty-six? If we've got fifty-five, then in all reality, fifty-five of them are kind of Turds. Why aren't we just offloading the fifty-five and trying to replace the fleet?
In discussion with the Great Life staff before they left, More days than not, thirty-six carts is enough for that golf course.
Eighteen holes times two.
Yeah. Now, in this era of social distancing and one person per cart, that strains that a little bit. But again, we don't anticipate being in that for the next ten years, but again, we can't forecast the future. The So thirty-six is a number that the Great Life staff was very comfortable with. It's a number that we believe is a reasonable number For the amount of use that we anticipate on the course. When you add in the private court, the private carts that are already, that, that people are using, some prefer the walk. If you're hosting a tournament, you rent the extra carts that you need, and that's part of the tournament fee. So there's a real, no real cost to the city in that regard as passed through. So thirty-six, we believe was a number that we could afford.
Okay, so
And it would serve me.
So I guess my big question is, why are we keeping nineteen carts? That it sounds like are going to cost us extra money to try and keep them running. I mean, I don't
We don't have to keep them.
If we only, if we only need, if you're saying we only need thirty-six carts, Then why, I just, I'm curious why would we keep carts that we have to keep pouring money into?
Because that's all they take and trade.
We don't have to keep them. In order to facilitate the lease agreement, we have to trade a like number. So if we're leasing thirty-six, we have to trade thirty-six.
And they have to be operating.
And they have to be operating carts.
Sure.
The other nineteen, we can do, we can sell, we can trade, we can do whatever, but we have to match them cart for cart. And their definition of running means it gets from where it's parked on their trailer.
So we, so you're telling me nineteen carts out there that won't get from where they're parked on their trailer? Sixteen, you say you've got three that are good.
I'm telling you that I'm not going to commit to that because I've not put my rear end in the seat and tried to drive All sixteen of those carts. I can tell you that there are several that have no batteries in them, and so they won't go anywhere. We have contactor problems and some, yeah. It's, it's a litany of problems from cart to cart.
That's fine. I just, I don't want sinking a bunch of money in the carts that are five or six or seven years old, trying, trying to keep them running.
It, it's just, again, when listing your options.
I understand.
It, it, that's just an option.
And it could be where we take some of those carts and we piece them, and then we put, we can put like ten together that work, and then the rest are, so I think Their staff can put, do some of that, make some of those carts work.
We just need some time to get through them. We don't really have time to
I got you.
To go through those to really figure out what it's going to take.
I'd like to have some, I, I like the idea of having a few backups, just in case something I don't disagree. I just don't want us sinking a bunch of money into golf carts.
If you can get six of those running, they're kind of backup units. We've got forty-two in stock now instead of thirty-six. It's, there are some options.
Let's break and start with that, boys.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
So the thirty-six carts, and it was a four-year lease, right, Kevin?
Yes, that's correct.
Four-year lease is, the annual payment is ten thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. The other reason why this is so Good, I guess, is that's a pretty good deal. And the reason it's a pretty good deal is because they're, they were able to talk to a golf company, golf cart company That had a number of cancellations on orders because of the COVID issue. And so as a result of that, if we swoop in, get these orders, they will make these carts. So There's, there is a delay. We won't get the carts till June. But we will be able to take advantage of the fact that somebody else canceled their order, and we'll get bottom prices on this lease. Four-year lease for ten thousand bucks. You wouldn't get that. I mean, what was, last, last time we looked at this, what was the lease? Do you remember?
I, I want to say it was near thirty.
Well, the, the second, yeah, the second, the second lowest, if you will,
We had two.
Was twenty-six thousand, nineteen dollars. So we're going from ten thousand, six to twenty-six thousand dollars between two different lease companies.
And that lease amount won't change for four years.
That's correct.
Is that going to be the same person you've used in the past?
For the leasing? These, the, the low lease here is Kansas Golf and Turf for Easy Go carts. The other bidder was M and M, and they have Club Cart. So Easy Go Twenty-four something per cart was the lease rate per month, which
Yeah, twenty-four something.
Is surprising. I was shocked when we got that number back.
Shocked high, shocked low.
Shocked low.
I say, yeah.
I say we do it before they change your mind. I say we do it before they change your mind.
I would, we, yeah, yeah. It's a good deal. Do you need to vote on it?
Yeah, so quickly, please. Just authorize me to sign the lease Here for Easy Go carts from Kansas Golf and Turf.
I move to allow the city manager to sign a lease for thirty-six Easy Go carts from Kansas Golf and Turf.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five out. Is that all for Prairie Trails, David?
You promised.
That's all I got.
This week. Odds for discussion, number fifteen, COVID-nineteen update.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
So Mayor Young pretty much gave the overview of the, what we're doing thus far. We'll be opening the city facilities up next Monday. We've got all of our staff back. We're getting everything cleaned and prepped for public to come back. One thing that we did want to talk about, however, that is on the minds of not only our citizens, but many communities throughout the region and state, or nation for that matter, Is the pool. To open or not to open, that is the question. As Shakespeare once said, There's really not an easy answer to this. The governor's plan, what allows to open the pool in phase two, Which begins May, no, no, earlier than May eighteenth, which we wouldn't open it up until Memorial Weekend. However, CDC guidelines have come down, and while they are guidelines, they are kind of the best practices for opening pools in, in the state of COVID. And so what they are recommending would require us to reduce our hours of operation. They would require us to Basically establish swimming sessions. So you have like one session, and I'm just going to make up an example here, just so you can get the illustration. One session would might be two hours. You get everybody out of the pool. You bring in your cleaning crew. They disinfect. The cleaning crew cannot be a, a member of your lifeguard staff. So the cleaning crew comes in, they do their, their bit. Then when they're done, the second session begins. So you have that group of, of kids or people come in, they use the pool. When that session's over, the cleaning crew comes back in, does their bit. And you do this until you close down for the evening. In addition to that, CDC guidelines are suggesting that anyone that's coming to the pool should be wearing a mask upon entering the pool. And if they're not wearing masks, then the guidelines suggest that we should turn them away until they come back with a mask.
They can take it off once they get in there?
Yeah, so the thought process is that as they're
How good is that?
Well, I think the, the thought process is that as they're in line, waiting to get through the pool, they're in close proximity. And so that would protect people. I'm, I'm just wondering what the CDC guidelines are. They are also recommending that all lifeguards wear masks for the entire time of their own shift. So there's that.
When they're up in the air, eight feet.
Think of that suntan.
It'll be awesome.
Doesn't ultraviolet light kill that shit?
So that's one theory, yes.
I mean, seriously, doesn't it?
No.
Slice all of them.
So does chlorine kill it if they defecate in that pool? Urinate in the pool?
Well, we have, regardless of COVID issues, we have bodily fluid issues in the pool every summer. Our chemical makeup does kill Most of those things. If we have a, you know, apologize for crudeness of this, we refer to it as a code brown in the pool. We have to remove said code And then close the area of the pool and treat it specifically. Depending on where that happens, we could shut down the whole facility. We could shut down a section. We could shut down one pool. It just kind of depends on the location. But there is a period of time that we have to close. So far, The belief is that The chemicals in the pool Do prevent the spread of the virus. It's the, I'm swimming along, I swallow water, I come up and I Spit that out, and you're within that six feet distance of me, and you get it, and if I had it, it's been passed on. That's the speculation. Nobody really knows the, the true answer at this point. But as David was alluding to, These are, the CDC has not published their recommendations and guidelines. This was discussed on a conference call. I wasn't able to be on that call, but one of my colleagues in another community filled me in on the nuts and bolts of the call, and, and he's touched on the topics that were discussed.
What are you disinfecting? What are you supposed to be disinfecting at the pool?
The handrails, the slides, anything that has human contact. The showers, the restrooms. Door handles, whatever could be touched.
All the concrete decking?
Yes, we would have to spray. Again, in theory, right now, we'd have to spray the deck. We're supposed to do that frequently. No one has defined frequently yet. But there should be a thorough cleaning Prior to open at some point during the day. That's why the two-hour window, a thirty-minute break to clean, and then cleaning thoroughly at the end of the day. The And the, again, recommendation, the sitting lifeguards should not be the cleaning crew. That doesn't mean we couldn't have an off-duty lifeguard as part of the cleaning crew that comes in, but those working that day should not be part of the cleaning crew.
So when you spray off the concrete, you're thinking you spray it off with pool water, treated water?
No, we would probably use, and we're still digging into this, we would probably use a product that is Friendly to the water and friendly to people. It's what we use to clean our gutters now. We can probably just spray that with a pump-up sprayer, walk the deck.
And you just let it sit as a
And it will dissipate.
So what do you want to do? Do you want to keep them closed until it gets a little bit better, or?
Well, we have a number of scenarios. I, you know, we can, we can open it, or we can close it, or we can wait. The scenario that Kevin did, we were talking before this meeting, and the scenario that he had come up with, and again, based on CDC guidelines for, based on pool size.
We're, we're kind of grasping at a number of people that could come in at one time. We don't really have a clear-cut formula and definition yet. But the reality is, it's going to be pretty small groups. Twenty-five to thirty swimmers at a time In that two-hour window, if that's the direction that we go. And we would then reduce the number of staff. There aren't as many people in the water to watch. My suggestion in that scenario is that we would close the high dive and the slide that's in the deep end of the pool. That one gets not much use. It's one less area that we have to, in that case, two less areas that we have to sanitize regularly if people aren't touching it. We continue to use our big slide, our low boards Where our history is, those are safer areas. We have the occasional, I use the term rescue, but the slide, I use it loosely because it's often a, a younger swimmer who kind of gets caught in that current, and it's more of a boost out than it is a save. You're not in danger of drowning, but we're cognizant of that. So that's how I would suggest if we're going to, excuse me, if we're going to open, that's something that we consider. Some of our, some of my colleagues Believe, and they're waiting on their elected officials or their governing body decide, are leaning toward not opening because of the challenges that this is going to present for Sanitizing, sanitizing the pool on a regular basis.
So what does that do to splash parks?
Splash parks are, at this point, an even bigger question mark, but The early indications are that they would remain closed because of the proximity of people In a confined area. So if you have a bucket in our splash pad, everybody's standing under the bucket, we don't have six feet distance here. We're shoulder to shoulder, and the same thing applies. And the same thing applies. The water hit you, you do this, and now there's that potential for contact. So.
But the current governor's plan is to be completely opened back up by June eighteenth or whatever?
I believe that would be correct, yes.
So, I mean, even at that point, those, those, those things go away, right?
They do have the potential to go away. Again, none of us can forecast. But one of the challenges that David and I talked about is we have a challenge of trying to communicate with potential staff members. Uh, they don't want to sit around waiting for a potential opening that doesn't happen, and they don't have an opportunity to find other employment. Even based on the governor's dates, my recommendation would be that we not open Memorial Day weekend, that that gets pushed back into that next phase, closer to June the thirteenth, the weekend in, in there. We have staff to train. We lost our training facility and the ability to train.
At the high school.
This spring because of the distancing requirements. So we have to coordinate training that has to happen in our outdoor pool. A lot of that is blended learning on, online, but you still have to pass some of the tests in the water. Our pool is full right now. We went ahead and filled it. We're filtering to prepare, just as we normally would. The water temperature is not ideal for training at this particular moment, so.
So your recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to wait until the middle part of June to open the pool. Not open it on Memorial Weekend, but wait till that, what, fifteenth? Eighteenth, somewhere in that area. Is that a true statement?
That's mostly true. I don't know that I'm here to really give you a recommendation. I'm kind of here to just lay out scenarios for you. I, I don't know that I'm ready to make a recommendation because there are still some unknowns. Unless the direction and the will of this body is to make the decision not to open. And then that's information we can communicate to potential staff members that we are not going to open the pool.
At what point? What's the latest we could make the decision if at our next meeting this month, if we made the decision then? Would that be, would that cause you hardship with hiring staff to?
I don't know that it's going to cause hardship. It may cause us to lose a few guards that are gonna move on.
Right.
Potential guards. They don't want to wait.
Sure.
Um, but that, that can happen regardless of what situation that we're dealing with. If we open to limited crowds, the number of staff that we need on a daily basis increases. So we wouldn't need to have a staff of twenty available guards. We could probably do it with ten. Depending on, again, the numbers.
Cleaning crews and other things too.
Yeah, there's all of that, but we have, we do have maintenance staff that can shift into that. We, the cleaning side of it, we're going to probably have to manage with existing staff or off duty lifeguards because the hours are gonna be so goofy. You have to show up at three fifteen to get ready to clean the pool at three thirty, be out between four and four fifteen, and then you go home. I mean, there's, it, there's just lots of unknowns and lots of challenges ahead of us. But the answer to your question about waiting until the eighteenth, that's not a deal breaker by any stretch of the imagination. Then we have to figure out who wants the job, who's qualified, who needs trade.
Okay, so let me, let me do it a different way then. Does that help you or hurt you?
Waiting?
Waiting to make the decision.
Waiting to make the decision, I don't think hurts us. I, I'm gonna, this is gonna sound like a cop out, I'm gonna say it's a neutral decision. If we wait, if we wait until the eighteenth, I could tell those that are still kind of hoping to be a lifeguard this summer, hopefully we can give you an answer on the eighteenth. Our intention is to open in some fashion, but we can't make any promises. And again, until we get clearer information from CDC and from other entities and kind of look and see what our peers are doing, you know, I, one of the, not this last call, the call before that I was a part of, Johnson County has lots of pools. They aren't going to open their usual number of pools. They hadn't made a decision on what they were gonna do. And they were gonna limit their, uh, patrons to eighteen percent of their deck space. And I don't know what their deck space was, so I don't know how many people that is. That was the criteria they were using three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. I didn't hear what they may have said in this last call. I just got the highlights of some of the things that the CDC was talking about.
I mean, the truth is, we really can't make a decision.
If your intention is to try to open the pool, you can't make a decision today. If your intention is to decide that it does not make sense to open a pool, you can make that decision at any point.
Personally, I'm not to that point yet. I'm not to the point yet. But I'm also acting out of sheer ignorance. I don't know anything about this crap, other than I don't want it.
Well, most, most, most people don't.
I know that. That's the only thing I know about it for sure.
We get unprecedented, I mean, we get guidelines from the CDC, but it's not best practices because there's been no practices prior to this. So they're just, um, they're using, you know, their models to try and, try and create those guidelines. And that's the reason that the guidelines aren't very clear yet or they haven't been documented, because they're not really sure what to do.
And some of those recommendations also include no pool furniture provided by the pool operator. It's bring your own seat. Those types of things to reduce.
Oh, yeah, but, you know, they'll, they'll nickel and dime me to death. I, personally, I feel if you say it's not going to hurt you, for lack of a better word, I think I'd be in favor of waiting at this point to make the decision.
Have a conversation at the next meeting.
Is the lake in open?
Maybe we'll know more by then.
I've not heard what their plan is.
They're open. Everything's open at the lake. There were twenty seven people out there this weekend, so.
Who is?
The lake. Next, Kevin.
Let me rephrase it. The new beach wasn't open. It was still corned off, but the old beach up on Blue Stil was open.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Temporary suspension of work sessions.
Kevin, wait, no, I got one more thing on COVID update, and that was baseball softball.
It's a trifecta for me to see. So, baseball softball. We're part of the Wichita Heights Junior Baseball Softball League for the bulk of our program. The board met about three weeks ago to discuss where we were in this, in this, uh, time of uncertainty. And the decision was made at that point to postpone making a decision on the league until May the thirteenth. Since that time, Little League Baseball has decided not to hold their regional tournaments or their Little League World Series. So those are canceled for two thousand and twenty. Again, social distancing is one of the bigger challenges with baseball and softball. In Sunday's Wichita paper, there was an article about leagues in the Wichita area that were going to begin based on the governor's phase routine. They were the Genesis Complex, Semi Complex, west side of Wichita, near Goddard. I'm not sure exactly where it falls, but west. Southwest Boys Club, which is in Wichita, and Park City Youth Program, which, Park City Youth Program is a member of Wichita Heights League. And then also I've read that West Urban of Wichita was planning to go. It's my understanding that all of those leagues are more profit driven leagues. Those are operating to make money, where we are operating it as a service and a remedy to, um, young people in El Dorado. Some conversations with other members of the Wichita Heights League. I get a sense, and again, the meeting is not until May the thirteenth, I get a sense that a majority would probably discuss not playing. If we do play, it's a compressed season right now. We would already be playing.
Yeah.
If things were normal. So the, the question, what stance do we take? As I read the article in Sunday's paper about the leagues that are playing, they're doing things like extending the dugouts down each baseline. That's doable. Changing the rules of holding runners on base and leading off and the ability to steal and things of that nature. They didn't get into the weeds of how those rules were, but they were gonna change the rules. They were gonna place one umpire near the pitcher instead of behind home plate. So they were gonna make all these adjustments to baseball and softball. Can it be done? Absolutely. Is it ideal? Probably not. I, I don't really know how that would work. So, and of course, as you might imagine, we're getting inquiries, are we having a baseball season? And our answer is, we don't know yet. We're still gathering information, waiting on the Heights League to see what they're going to do. So that's in front of us as well.
What about the Broncos, Jordan?
The Broncos have postponed their season until June the fifteenth start.
So they're set to start June fifteenth?
But again, subject to what happens between now and then. But that's the last word from that league is a June fifteenth start. So if, right now, we're not scheduling any practices. Our fields of McDonald's stadium are open to the public. We have not put our pitcher's mounds out on the baseball fields. And up until now, in an effort to comply with the governor's orders, I don't believe it's a good practice for us to put those mounds out yet until we get to the next phase. We're not there yet. Um, and then kind of see where we are. If you go by our ball fields on occasion, you'll see makings of the team out there practicing. But if the numbers for distancing are in the thirties or around fifty, that's pretty tough to do in a baseball game when you're gonna have approximately twenty four players between two teams, a couple of coaches, a couple of umpires. And then what do we do with fans? So there are some challenges. We've discussed if we play, removing the bleachers, bringing your own chair, standing at a distance. It, again, it's much like the pool. It's gonna create a lot of challenges. It's gonna create a need for more cleaning of restroom facilities every night. It's just, it's challenges. And, and our desire would be to give kids an opportunity to play baseball and softball. But sometimes the reality of what we're faced with makes that challenging, to say the least.
I for one, um, I'm in favor of trying to continue, trying to have a season for the kids. I don't know, I don't, I mean, whatever we've got to do to help, help facilitate that, and I'm sure that, you know, there's other people that vote in the league, whether that, that, the games are gonna happen or not. But, um, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to get both open sometime this year to give, give these kids some sort of normalcy through the summer. Um, so, I mean, that, that's kind of where I come down. No matter what, I, I, I would like us to try. One of five, but that's where I come down, is that I want, I want to give them some sort of normalcy as soon as we can, personally.
I think you could probably deal with the players and the coaches working really hard to follow the rules of social distancing. I wouldn't wish the spectators on anybody to try to convince them that the only reason they're being allowed to come and watch is because they're willing to do the social distancing necessary to allow it to happen. I mean, this is more than just saying kids need a normal summer, they need to be able to go swimming, they need to be able to play ball, they need to be able to do this and that. Unless the adults in the group actually act like adults and take control of the situation and deal with the seriousness of it and what needs to be done, I, I wouldn't, I won't do it. I won't vote for it.
Like usual, we're opposite ends.
Yes, and that's why they've got you down there and me down here.
I don't think we have enough information yet.
No, it's, it's not to make that decision. And if a majority of the, of the Heights League decides not to play, that also changes the, the perspective that we're faced with. Basically, do we have enough teams in each league to even play locally on a limited basis? One of the concerns, one of my personal concerns about being in the league this year is the people that are coming from other communities to our community. It's not just our folks. We're bringing people from, from other places. Not that, it's not disparaging comment, but if there's a hotspot on the northeast side of Wichita and we're inviting them to El Dorado, I'm not sure that that's a great thing. But again, we can what if this until cows come home.
Till we don't do anything.
Right, exactly. So I, I'm, I'm not trying to be a forecaster of doom. I'm just trying to. And as I told Brian and Don Friday, as we were kind of discussing this, I have a little bit of, I have more than a little bit, I'm concerned about our staff. Not so much our supervisory staff. I'm concerned about our umpiring staff interacting with some of these folks that we don't know. These are largely young people that I hate to put in harm's way. But again, I want our, I want our young people to be able to play that want to play. So I'm really riding that fence pretty hard.
Any thoughts, Nick?
I think I agree with Greg. I, I think we need more information.
The Heights League will meet on the thirteenth, so we'll see what they're doing at that one.
So to that point, I would say the conver, it's kind of a moot conversation, right? If the rest of the Heights League doesn't want to play ball, then, you know, there's not a lot we can do at that point.
Well, I also think you need to let us know whether what is required of you is doable.
Right, and, and we would have to get, we'll get into the weeds. If the decision of the league is to continue to try to figure out how to play, we're gonna have to establish what those rules are for this year as we move forward. Is it limiting the number of, it, it's all a plethora of things. What, what's it gonna be? Are we gonna go to one umpire calling balls and strikes from, from the pitcher's mound? I don't know. Those are things that we're gonna have to work through. Regardless of the decision, well, if they decide to play, it's going to be a shortened season than what we're used to because the timeframe discussed originally was hopefully starting practices June one, games beginning sometime around the fifteenth, sixteenth of June, and a wrap up about thirty days later. So rainouts would probably not be made up, um, things of that nature. So it would be a compressed season. Regardless of what decision we make.
So as I was saying, I think that it's, you know, we're not gonna know a lot until we hear from, until we understand what the rest of the Heights League is doing. With that being said, um, you know, if, if the league as a whole, generally as a whole, is a go, um, I, I really, I've, I've got real interest in us trying to figure out how to make a go of it as well. Um, making sure that our, you know, that we are working with the league and with, with that group to, to, you know, kind of create the right kind of guidelines within the league to, to try to keep, um, our participants and our coaches and our spectators safe as well. But I, you know, if there's an opportunity to, to find a, find a safe and healthy way for, for our kids to get out and, and, and play some ball, then I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that, so. So I'm anxious to hear the update at our next meeting from the Heights meeting on the thirteenth.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Temporary suspension of work sessions.
Yeah, so we had, the commission had talked about this, I don't know, another so, maybe, uh, to simply suspend through April, it's May. So, um, I would recommend that we go ahead and start them back up. Um, next week would be a work session. I guess if we don't do that one, just because of timing, but then we can do the one, the second one in, in May, just start them there, if, if that would be something of interest to you all.
I think so. I think we gotta get back to the business of the city, so.
Can we do it like this? I'll sit up here, you sit there, instead of all sitting at that table down there?
Oh, that makes it too hard for me to pick on Matt if we do that.
So we just throw, throw stuff at each other this way? You just have to throw harder?
We can spread the tables out, um, we can experiment with different things.
We've probably figured it out, but you guys are in favor of getting her going? Any concerns about that? All right. Number seventeen, sponsorships and advertising on municipal assets.
Yeah, so, um, we've had a number of conversations internally about, um, selling advertisement space on useful assets. For example, uh, the water tower needs to be repainted, um, up in the industrial park. So one idea to help offset some of those costs would be to potentially sell advertising, maybe to one or two or more um, businesses in the business park to help offset that, as an example. Um, I know in the past, they've talked about selling ads in, in Mac Stadium or, um, East Park over here for, for baseball or softball. Um, we've, and now we've got a golf course again, so send the advertisement space on, we've got eighteen holes. A number of opportunities to sell advertisement space, um, out there as well. And I'm sure there's a number of other opportunities for advertisement, um, if you will, um, throughout the city. So the, the question is, is this something of interest to you all? If so, staff can come up with a policy that you guys can talk about deliberate on or non. If it's not, then we won't, we won't do that and we'll just move on with life. Um, but it is an opportunity maybe to raise some revenue for specific things. Would that be like, for example, improvements in Mac Stadium could be in part funded with, with advertisement space. Um, or water tower painting, for example. Um, so there's different things that could be offset with advertising dollars. Um, so just wanted to get some pulls on that, because I know different cities, different city commissions even, have different theories on that, uh, philosophies on that. And, uh, wanna make sure we were in line with what you guys wanted before we went out and started asking people for money.
So, I'd mentioned this to David at lunch here a, a while back. You know, Nick was on the commission with me when, uh, Oil Hill School was rebuilt and there was a advertisement, the Bears Bank advertised on there.
And they're signed.
And they're signing out there. We had a pretty extensive conversation back then about advertising and, 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 uh, on the public, um, at the school level, and we talked something about city level. My comment at the time was, um, you know, every, the schools, our cities, everybody runs, we, we're all running tight budgets, trying to, trying to provide as much as we can for, uh, for our citizens. You know, I think at the time, I'd have to look back in the minutes, but I'm pretty sure at the time I said, if, if I had my way at school, it'd look like a NASCAR with so many advertisements on it, because it would provide more resources for the students and the teachers. I feel the same way about our facilities in city. We've got some great facilities and some great opportunities. Um, there's been discussion in the past about partnering with, with, um, the other entities that use some of our facilities. Um, uh, there's been discussion in the past about at Mac Stadium about partnering with uh, USD four ninety, with Butler, with the Broncos, and trying to sell some advertising out there to help our funding, help their funding. Same thing at East Park. Uh, we had some signage on, on scoreboards around town for a few years, um, that was, that was sold. Um, that, that raised a little bit of money. I, I'm very much in favor of this. I would like to see a consistent policy put together, um, a consistent pricing model. Those are things that I'd like to see, but I'm very much in favor of, of trying to find ways to generate some revenue to support the, the services and the systems that we, uh, that we maintain around this, and facilities that we maintain around the city.
Yes.
Good to go?
Yes.
Thoughts, comments, concerns, complaints? All right, just talking about putting a policy in place, right?
Put a policy in place. And bring it back to us so we can take a look at it.
Yeah, if you guys said, no, I don't really wanna see any advertising, then I wouldn't waste my time on it.
Okay.
I don't wanna advertise on water towers, personally.
Put a policy in place and bring it to us and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, but other than that, that's, I'm, I'm interested in that, but.
Please, Carl.
Dude, you wanna put them on trash cans, put them in a suit like NASCAR. I'm cool with that, but I just, I don't.
Just kidding.
How about, how about City of El Dorado with the El Dorado flag?
Yeah, that's not, we didn't buy that.
We'd have to buy that. I want someone else to buy that.
That's, yeah, that's not what they're talking about.
And, well, I, but on water towers.
So if they're talking about, it's like putting BG on that.
No, BG's, we need, City of El Dorado on the water tower.
Bring us a policy.
Just bring us a policy and we'll have the conversation then, yes.
Okay.
Uh, number eighteen, city commission and advisory board updates. Do you have anything, Commissioner Wilkinson?
We haven't met.
Okay.
Well, the library board hasn't met, but, uh, the Christie, the director's been working her butt off. And originally, the plan was to, today, bring some staff back and start, you know, getting stuff ready. And they pushed that back a little bit. Um, like to wait another week. So what she, uh, recommended and the board all gave her approval was, uh, bring the staff back in, tentatively the eleventh of May. And then resume curbside and allow returns tentative, tentatively the eighteenth of May with restricted hours. And then reopen the library with restrictions, tentative date, June one. And then the phase four would be reopened to the new normal, whatever that is. All the area libraries have canceled their summer reading programs, and some are trying to do it virtually. They're going to plan, we're going to plan a virtual summer reading program, and they're working with a vendor to get an app and a website. But, um, that's pretty much it. Uh, morale is, morale is high. Everybody wants to get back to work. Um, but, uh, everybody's holding on and wanting to, I know I've missed it. I missed it, missed the library really bad, so hopefully we can get her going again. That's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. Greg?
I have nothing.
Matt?
Um, I've got a couple of things. I've received some pretty upset people. Denver and Olive. Um, with the gas line going across Denver. Um, last week or the week before, there was about a twelve-inch dip or drop in what they, when they filled it in for the weekend. Angry people with that. Um, if we can, and I, I, I'd be surprised if I didn't, you didn't get a phone call from someone wanting their car fixed, um, like that.
How big, how big of a dip?
It was this deep. I went by and saw, it was twelve inches deep, this wide, twelve inches deep, boom.
Well, I, I, I came that way this evening and...
It was, it was better today.
Yeah.
But what I, I think what's happening is, is that they didn't fill it in enough for the temporary over the weekend. And that's, from what I understand, they're working their way down Olive. Is that correct? So I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is, is that can we talk to them and make sure when we get to Taylor and Washington and Star, or whichever direction that they're going, that we don't have that, we, that they try to do a little bit better job on that. The, um, the Wichita, um, whatever those people are that are marketing our, our land and whatnot to, to Tesla. Is there not something that we should be doing in that portion also? Trying to do some sort of push on our own?
Um, at this point now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Why? If you don't, might be asking.
I would say that in a national recruitment process like this, it's best to have one voice, one unit. Um, so there's not confusion. The reason Greater Wichita Partnership took the lead on that project is because, um, probably because they're larger than than us, quite, quite specifically, and they have the resources to build a website on the fly. They have the resources to do that. And they were probably contacted by, I don't know who they were contacted to do that, but they, they did. Um, so in essence, we're getting free promotion, we're getting free marketing, we're getting all that stuff. Um, but I, I can tell you in, in other communities that have had recruitment of that type of magnitude, the more people that get involved in terms of, well, we can do our own thing, and we can do our thing, it just gets to be very cluttered. And the, the, the fact is, Tesla's already looking at several sites. This is just a show. It's not really gonna make the difference for him. They're actually, you know, their guy is gonna contact the, the sites that they're interested in, and they're gonna get the information they need. And this is just kind of like a, a sideshow to them. Um, it's, it's nice because it gets us free publicity, but in terms of our relationship with Tesla, Wichita's relationship with Tesla, it doesn't really do anything for that, because the decision makers aren't really looking at this stuff right now. Um, I, that's probably the best answer halfway. I don't know if that is the right answer, but, um,
Okay.
It's just the best answer I can come up with right now.
Okay. I just, I, I like the fact that we're, we're, we're trying to push that out and we're trying to do something with it, um, in, in that area. I just, I, I just didn't know. I, I kind of thought that we should be part of the voice in that, not letting someone else dictate that, that's, that scenario.
Yeah.
Personally.
I mean, it's, it's probably a good point, but oftentimes, these things are on a time crunch. And if you orchestrate a big committee, well, I don't like the kid that's wearing a NASA hat. I need to have the kid wearing, it becomes very, very elongated, very cumbersome. In fact, I wasn't, I wasn't contacted, the city wasn't contacted until after it was published and after it was ready to go. So I don't, I don't even know where the first contact even came from. Um, and oft- oftentimes, a company like that, they don't call the El Dorados of the world, they call the Wichitas of the world, or they call the Department of Commerce of the world. Commerce says, hey, you know, we're looking for a site in metropolitan areas, so that's Wichita, and that's Johnson County. What do you got? And then a lot of times, the smaller communities aren't even apprised of that process until it gets to a lower level. We may not like it, but that's, that's how those processes work. I can tell you that, for example, the Amazon process, everybody was like, who wants Amazon? And everyone raised their hand. And Amazon's like, we don't care.
Right.
We want each metropolitan area to provide us with one proposal, 'cause we don't wanna hear about all the small towns that think they've got a site or anything like that. I think the cool thing about this is Wichita is promoting our site and our site only. They're not promoting any sites in Wichita because they know Wichita has no site that can meet their needs. So I think that's, that's kind of cool. But I think from a timing standpoint, from a resource standpoint, there are probably a number of reasons why we weren't engaged in that process. And it, I mean, it's kind of, that's ship's sail, and you could say it's probably too late, but...
So, and I, I'm just, just for informational purposes also, so we were not contacted before we put that website up?
I was not. No, I, I did not see that until that site was actually up and in.
And you meet with Inc. and everybody every week still, right?
Um, every other week, I think.
Every other week. But so, okay, so Inc. wasn't even apprised to?
Um, I don't know at, at what point they were apprised of it or not. I was, I received information from Linda, but I, I don't, I can't remember, or I don't know.
But that was after it was published. I guess it's where I'm going, what I'm trying to figure out here is that.
Yeah, it was, it was close to when it was published or right thereafter, so.
Do you know when she was informed?
I do. Well, does it bother you that Inc.'s involved in it? Is that what you're bringing this up for?
No, I'm just trying to figure out if Inc. had anything to do with it or if it was just, what he's just telling me, what he's just telling me is, is that he didn't hear about it until it was published. So I'm trying to figure out if Inc. is actually part of the process, or it was, they were surprised too. I feel that's a valid piece of information that I can use in the future.
So I, I feel like they were engaged because the, the, some of the folks that developed that website, provided some of that information, was candid marketing. And they also had information on our site, which would have come from over me. But I guess I wasn't necessarily asking for that information, because at that point, it wasn't necessarily...
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the chain of events. If, if you're not hearing about it until right before it's published, though, I'm trying to figure out how we were, how hard we were getting at that process. So in the future, I know how this all works.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
That's all I got.
But I can tell you that in the event that Tesla's like, you know, we wanna look at the site, uh, it'll probably, it'll probably become quieter in, in regard that there'll be less information that'll be broadcast. Um, when companies like this are like, okay, we're gonna narrow it down to ten sites, sorry, you can't tell anyone about this. We, we have specific instructions that we need to get information on, and we don't need the world to know that stuff, 'cause those are proprietary and, and those kind of things. So I've been in, involved in other economic loan projects, not necessarily here, where it's like you gotta sign an NDA, non-disclosure agreement, and you can't just go around and saying, hey, we're, we're, we're doing this. Now, this one's kind of backwards, because we know who it is. But even though we know who it is, they may have information that they don't want out and about in, in the world, because they have competitors. They have people that are, you know, trying to get an inside track on, okay, what's, what's their process look like? What's, you know, how are they doing this, or what's, where their raw materials coming from? Companies don't wanna share that information, and so a lot of times when they move to that next level, um, you have to sign an, an NDA.
Radio silence at that point.
Yeah. You guys will be apprised of information as much as I can provide it, but you may not get as much information as you've been provided thus far.
City managers report.
I do have a couple of things. I'll try to make as brief as I can, but it's some good stuff, actually. So, uh, McConnell Air Force Base is going to do a flyover to salute the community and frontline this COVID responders. Uh, they're actually doing a route where they're going from Newton, and they're gonna fly over Wichita, and they're gonna hit Andover and a number of cities in the region. Um, and they're gonna fly over, this is gonna be on May sixth, beginning at ten AM. It's called Operation America Strong. They will fly two KC one thirty-five Stratotankers and a KC forty-six Pegasus from McConnell, followed closely by Wichita's own B twenty-nine Super Fortress Doc. Uh, they're gonna fly over local communities and hospitals to salute first responders, military members, and essential personnel who are working on the front lines to combat the coronavirus. Um, the flight path will bring you the aircraft from Wichita, Derby, Newton, Andover, Garden Plain, Hayesville, and El Dorado, including eleven local hospitals. Uh, the flyover will be about an hour long in, in total duration. Um, so, again, this will begin about ten AM, and this notice that I have here doesn't actually say, they actually mapped it out approximately when they will be in each community. So we will start, uh, putting that information out on Facebook beginning tomorrow, so the folks can kind of get their front row seat for the, um, flyover, which will be pretty cool. That is the sixth, yes.
From their yard.
Their yard, yes. Or central, or wherever. I think they're gonna, generally over SBA, but, you know, that's a pretty big swath of, from, from that height, so. Um, another thing that we've recently become aware of is that the United States Army Corps of Engineers, um, Tulsa District is initiating a process to update the Council Grove, Marion, Elk City, and El Dorado master plans for the lakes. Um, as part of the process, a notice is being provided inviting comments from the public, stakeholders, and various governmental agencies. Um, they're asking everyone to provide their comments via email. Um, they, they've done these things in the past, and they've done, they were actually planning to do like a, an open, not an open session, but like a kickoff meeting kind of thing. Uh, but due to COVID, they are unable to do that. And so they actually have a website that I will email you all, um, either tonight after this meeting or tomorrow morning. Um, so you can get the information on the current master plan. They've got a PowerPoint presentation kind of assembled. They've got a map, they've got the current, if you call it that, the current master plan. Um, so people can peruse that, and then they're, uh, accepting comments from May eleventh through June twenty-sixth. Um, and there's also a, a comment form with instruct, instructions that I will also provide you, and we can submit that or send that out via Facebook and everything else as well. Um, so, let's see. Quick note about the process. A public meeting is typically held, as I mentioned. Uh, but due to social distancing, this will be done virtually to assure citizens of their health, you know, that are interested in commenting. For this to be accomplished virtually, the Tulsa District will provide a website, and I'll put in information by May eighth. Place advertisements in newspapers and post that, um, announcements on social media. So when we become apprised of that website as well, we'll, we'll put that out there, um, so you all can see it in our public key as well. Um, so, just a couple of things I wanna kind of talk about real quickly. Number one, you... Number one, you all can provide comments as individuals, obviously, so that would be good and I would encourage you to do so. But I think it's also important for the city as well to submit some type of official comment. So I didn't know how you wanted to do that, um, if you wanted to kind of talk about that. Um, but we have until June 26th, I guess, from May, May 11th through June 26th to provide comments on the current master plan and what we think should be included in an update to that, uh, plan.
I think it's a great topic for our works, our first work session back to talk about that. Bring some, bring some talking points forward and then we can all kind of mull those over at that, at our work session or study session and try and, try and come up with a narrative from the city.
Okay.
Be my suggestion.
All right. Master plan from the Corps. I mean, what, I mean, what is the, I don't understand, I guess. Send me the information, maybe I, I can figure it out that way. I just don't understand what, because the Corps doesn't manage the land, they just manage the water or manage the gates, right?
So... Okay, it's right here. Let me read this to you real quick, just, it's a real, it's just a paragraph or two. Okay, so the Corps defines a master plan as, as the strategic land use management document that guides the conference of management development, development of all recreational, natural and cultural resources throughout the life of the water resource development project. So, in essence, if, if we want an expansion of recreation amenities, whether it's through the city private or the, the state wildlife parks or whoever, it needs to be first incorporated into this document before the Corps will approve it. Because they'll say, "Okay, you guys want to have this cool vein, is it in the plan?" There's not really a provision for that, so the answer is you gotta get this...
Yes, as a group, we have a lot to say about that, I believe, so.
Yeah, I'd get on the...
Yeah, I figured you'd be interested.
Yeah, 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 yeah. If that, if that's what that is, then yeah.
Yep.
Sign me up.
That's what it is. So I will get you all this information and we can schedule this for the next work session. Um, so on that, uh, I mentioned maybe not having it next week, but the, the next one after that. I, is that, I want to make sure I was on the same page with that, so.
Sounds good.
People showing up and... Okay, um, make sure I had everything. That's, that's pretty much all I had for that, so.
Just one thing on that topic, if we're gonna, if we're gonna meet and talk about that, we probably should reach out to some of, I mean, the guy at the marina to be part of that conversation. Certain stakeholders.
I've, we've, we've actually sat down and talked to him before, um, it's been a couple of months ago, but... So we, but we can do it again as well.
I would just like to have him part of that also, so we're all on the same page and we can, we're, that way we, him and I, him and us are working together against each other.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, Matt, but I do think that the commission needs to, we, we need to firm up what the city's general direction and position is gonna be and depending on one, and leaning on one business owner uh, for the entirety of, of the lake and trying to make sure there are...
Saying it's only kind of...
No, I understand, I'm saying, I'm just, well, from a marina perspective though, that's the only, that's the only game in town. And so, and not that I have anything against a marina owner out there, but, you know, if the, if the concept is to try to expand operations out there, um, I don't know that, that, that they're gonna want to invite competition to the table, so. So I think we need to, we need to develop, um, what, we need to understand, I would like to be able to have that open dialogue amongst the commission to be able to understand what everyone's...
Our, we don't invite...
Thoughts are before we, before we bring other people to the table.
But one thing we could do, uh, between now and then is, I don't like surveys, but I, I think one thing we can do is engage the community as well.
I agree.
You know, what do you want at the lake?
I agree.
Um, because I think the more we can expand that, the more opinion we have.
Well, that gives us more information.
Right, right. Okay, that was, that was all I had.
Anything else for the good of the order?
We're not having a work session till the 27th.
Sure, I don't have a calendar, but the one after the meeting on the 18th.
David, that's correct.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Because the next meeting's the 18th.
I'll see if I can work you in my calendar, it's pretty full this month.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move with adjourn.
The second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's put the same sign, motion carried five oh. Thanks, y'all.